Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this special town meeting to order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which this stands, a nation under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all. My name is Bill Tyte, moderator, and I'd like to do some introductions of the people up front. And we're going to start from your right, my left. We have members from our finance committee, Ken Smith and Nadine Holger. We have town council, Jonathan Eichman. We have our town administrator, Rhonda LeBombarde, and she has to change that name. Renee Wood, Bob Kilner, and Martin Mitsaw. All right, so we just want to go through some good housekeeping rules, our method of voting. Registered voters of the town of Sheffield were given a piece of paper coming into the meeting tonight. Voting will be done by a show of that piece of paper, and it was yellow. Individuals wishing to address the meeting must stand up, show the paper that they were given on the way in, and state their name and address. This will only need to be done the first time you address the meeting. Do not lose this piece of paper that you were given just in case there is a secret ballot later this evening. All speakers are being asked to keep their remarks to five minutes or less, and if you are still speaking at the four-and-a-half-minute mark, you will be given a reminder that you have thirty seconds left. If an individual wants to use the motion to move or call a question, he or she shall stand up and identify themselves, if they have already done so, and make the motion. Shouts to move direct the question from the audience will not be recognized. A motion to move the question requires a second and two-thirds vote, and is not debatable. All speakers who address this meeting are asked to keep their remarks positive. Remarks of a personal nature directed at anyone in attendance will not be tolerated. Do I have a motion to dispense with the town clerk reading the warrant? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's begin with Article One. Article One, to see if the town will vote to recodify the general bylaws by making substantive and non-substantive and ministerial amendments thereto as set forth in a document entitled Draft Town of Sheffield General Bylaw Recodification, March 2022, with text to be inserted shown as underlined and text to be deleted shown as struck through, on file in the office of the town clerk, and available on the town's website at www.shuffieldna.gov, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to recodify the general bylaws by making substantive and non-substantive and ministerial amendments thereto as set forth in a document entitled Draft Town of Sheffield General Bylaw Recodification, March 2022, with text to be inserted shown as underlined and text to be deleted shown as struck through.
Second. Okay, we have a second. Discussion.
I just wanted to let those who are here tonight voting on this matter know that if you've had a chance to read your voter information sheet, it pretty well states what is happening. Our bylaws have not been recodified into a single document since 2001. So this is... Can you not hear? No. All right, we're going to try this. Could we up the mic a little bit? All right, so if you can't hear, please just raise your hand, and we'll work on this until we get it right. So what this warrant article is about is taking our current bylaws and adding to them everything that you have voted on at special and annual town meetings, but have never been put into one single document. We also have reviewed both the select board as well as legal counsel twice these years' worth of general bylaws for up-to-dateness with both state and federal laws, as well as ADA and other provisions that had come in since then. We have, as you noted, made the changes that are outlined in your voter information document, and this represents quite a bit of time and energy, and it has passed legal counsel's review, and we hope that you will adopt it tonight. And if you do, the town promises that we will keep it up to date.
Any others discussion? I see none, so it's time to vote. So all in favor, hold up your... All opposed? Passed by unanimous vote. Article Two. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law Chapter Forty pursuant to which any municipal board or officer empowered to issue a license, permit, certificate, or to render a service or perform work for a person or a class of persons, may, from time to time, fix reasonable fees for all such licenses, permits, or certificates issued pursuant to statutes or regulations wherein the entire proceeds of the fee remain with the town, excepting the fees specifically exempted from the provisions of said statute, and may fix reasonable charges to be paid for any services rendered or work performed by the town or any department thereof for any person or class of persons. However, that in the case of a board officer appointed by an elected board, the fixing of such fee shall be subject to the review and approval of such elected board. And further, any fees currently applicable shall remain so until revised pursuant to the authority granted hereunder or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to accept the provisions of General Law Chapter Forty, Section Twenty-two F pursuant to which any municipal board or officer empowered to issue a license, permit, certificate, or to render a service or perform work for a person or a class of persons may, from time to time, fix reasonable fees for all such licenses, permits, or certificates issued pursuant to statutes or regulations wherein the entire proceeds of the fee remain with the town, excepting the fees specifically exempted from the provisions of said statute, and may fix reasonable charges to be paid for any services rendered or work performed by the town or any department thereof for any person or class of persons. However, that in the case of a board or officer appointed by an elected board, the fixing of such fee shall be subject to review and approval of such elected board. And further, any fees currently applicable shall remain so until revised pursuant to the authority granted hereunder.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Yes.
I just wanted to let people know again, if you had a chance to read your voter information sheet, when you passed Article One, you took out all of the fees and fines, some of which were in a huge sum of $1. And those fees and fines would now be set via this procedure that is Article Number Two. And as you can tell, it would be a public meeting, so public input, it will be sought, and anything that, as they're changed, would be posted for two weeks prior to going into effect. These would be things like parking fees or any of the other fees that were embedded in the old general bylaws. I hope that explains why this one is also, hopefully, a yes vote.
Any other discussion? I see none, so it's time to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed unanimous. Article Three. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $50,000 to the emergency reserve fund or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I have moved to transfer $50,000 from free cash to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures under the provisions of Chapter Forty, Section Six of the general laws known as the reserve fund.
Any discussion? I hope this is a sign of the whole meeting. Seeing none, it's time to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Seeing none. Motion passed unanimous. Article Four. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three F and Three-quarters for the purpose of establishing a separate revenue account that's been known as the PEG access and cable-related special revenue fund into which shall be deposited funds received in connection with the cable television franchise agreements between the town and Charter Communications, also known as spectrum, and/or any other cable operator, which funds shall be appropriated only for cable-related purposes consistent with the franchise agreements and in accordance with law, including, but not limited to, one, support of public educational or governmental PEG access cable television services; two, monitoring compliance of the cable operator with the cable television licenses; and/or, three, preparing for renewal of the cable licenses with such action to take effect as of the first date of the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022; and further, to transfer all cable television license proceeds and receipts held by the town for such purposes to such new PEG access and cable-related special revenue fund; and further, to appropriate from said fund a sum of money to expend it under the direction of the select board for such PEG access services; and further, to authorize the select board to enter into a grant agreement of up to ten years or such lesser term as the select board shall determine to be in the best interest of the town for expenditure of such funds for the provision of PEG community access television services or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three F, Three-quarters of Article Four as written in the warrant, and for such sum of money to be up to $1,700 per year.
Second. Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed unanimous. Okay, the remaining articles will need a two-thirds vote, just so we know. Article Five. To see if the town will amend the zoning bylaw as follows or take any action relative thereto as stated in the warrant. Do I have somebody from... Mr. Moderator?
Yes, I make the motion to approve the article as written in the warrant. Ken Smith, 465 Silver Street.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator. It's on George O'Leary, 45 Road. The warrant article has... Yeah. Warrant is exactly right. There's a slight misprint. The large-scale photovoltaic installation should read, "Any installation, 5,445 square feet or greater, no matter how or where mounted." If you remember the way it was, George.
I need to hold you off for a minute here. We need the planning board report before we can have a discussion. Is there somebody from the planning board that has a report? Yes, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The public hearing regarding this bylaw change was held on November 17th, 2021, and the reason for this change, as currently written, the large and small-scale solar arrays are difficult to interpret by the town officials and can also be misread by applicants. As such, the town has a large solar array in area but was classified as small scale due to how it was mounted. Our proposed changes tonight clearly define what is small and large scale, so no matter how or what they're mounted to, it is completely understandable in the future. Back on December 8th, 2021, the planning board voted to recommend that voters approve this article tonight.
Okay, so before we introduce an amendment, we need a vote to see if we're going to allow the amendment. Correct? The council? Yes, that's what George read. Okay.
Second.
We have a second. Okay. All right, so now we need to vote.
Okay, let me go over the amendment, if you don't mind, Mr. Moderator. When we originally put this in there, we were trying to obviously clarify the definition, but it was noted that we put "small scale" went up to 5,445, and then "large scale" started and went up from 5,445. So what George is presenting tonight is to make one 5,444 square feet, and the other one is 5,445 square feet. So it's clearly defined what is small, what is large, and if somebody was to put in one with that exact measurement, we wouldn't know whether they were large or small. So that is the amendment George is presenting tonight.
Okay. So it's my understanding, and I'll refer to town council, that we need to vote to allow the amendment before we vote on this?
We have a second. I think that the request was that the amendment be read one more time.
Okay. So do we have a second? Yes, okay. All right, any more? Any discussion? Additional discussion? Yes?
So if I understand this correct, the change is now that large scale is greater than 5,445 square feet, and less is less than 5,944? I'm still confused, I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
The large-scale installation would be 5,445 square feet or greater. The small-scale installation would be less than 5,445 square feet. It could be 5,444.5 square feet. But it's less than, as opposed to greater.
Any other questions? Discussion? Okay, so we need a two-thirds majority vote. Okay. All in favor of the amendment? All opposed? Passed by unanimous. Now we need... Any discussion? So before we vote on the original article? No discussion? Okay. All... Two-thirds, we need two-thirds vote for the vote. Argue with the amendment. All in favor? Okay, so we need time. Got to keep your hands up for a minute, because this is two-thirds. So this is a test. Do we have the counters? We'll do that, the next one, Bruce. Okay. All sitting arms are still up high. Very good. Counters, are you good? We're good. Put your arms down. Okay, so now we've got... Yeah. I want to give them a chance to write it down before we count them. Okay, all opposed? Okay. Motion passed unanimous. I should have listened to Bruce. Okay, let's move on. Article Six. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws as follows or take any action relative thereto. Insert in Section 7.5.4.1.6 additional requirements, conditions for adult-use marijuana establishment. Use the language as shown in italics so that the section 7.5.4.1.6 shall read as follows. The number of marijuana retailers permitted to be located within the town of Sheffield shall not exceed three, and the number of marijuana cultivator outdoor locations shall not exceed five. Mr. Moderator, I recommend... Let me approve this article as written. Do we have a second? Second. Any discussion, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
The planning board report?
So regarding this item, the limit on the five outdoor rooms. This was, if you remember, this was voted on last June, but due to a procedure issued, the public hearings and the subsequent vote on this item were deemed null and void by the Attorney General. Due to the overwhelming public support for this item last year, the planning board voted on December 22nd to bring this bylaw amendment back to the public again. The public hearing for this was held on January 12th, 2022. As of last year, the planning board was not in favor of this amendment, but due to the clerical error and the overwhelming public support, we voted to recommend the voters pass this article tonight, back on January 26th.
Any other discussion? Do we have any? Any discussion? You guys are good to me. Okay, we have the vote. All in favor? In my estimation, we have two-thirds majority. Save the applause for later. Okay. Article Number Seven. This is a citizen's petition. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw as follows or take any other action relative thereto as written in the warrant. So if you need somebody for...
Lauren High, 535 Conlon Road, Ashley Falls. Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the zoning bylaws as written in the warrant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Sari Hooy, 68th Street, Mr. Moderator. I'm on the planning board, and myself and all the people from the planning board have been working with the citizens' group representatives for quite a while now, discussing this article. And my sense of this article is that if we pass it as is, it will prevent local small businesses from being able to create a business in their home in the rural and village center areas. The citizens' group representatives that we worked with all agreed that making changes... They wanted to make changes that did not alienate small businesses from evolving in Sheffield. So we have been working on developing other bylaw changes, creating an overlay district in the village center to restrict where retail stores can go. And we are looking at developing our deliberation guidelines in a way that will help the planning board keep in mind the citizens' groups' needs and wants going forward into the future. And so we can still do that. We just haven't been able to come to a conclusion by this date. And so I would ask that we don't support this article, and we give the citizens' group and the planning board a little bit more time to develop more... Tagline for that, basically, so that we can develop bylaws that actually support small businesses but give the community what they want as well. Thank you.
Do we have the planning board report?
Sure. The public hearing on this particular article was held on November 17th, 2021, and at this point, the planning board has not voted to recommend, abstain, or reject the citizen's petition bylaw change. There were still questions surrounding it, which you just heard from Sari Hooy, and that is why we have not made a recommendation one way or another. But I do agree with Sari as well.
Sari is correct that we've been working together on this. We've not come to a place where we could bring it to this meeting. What I'd like to clarify is, Sari said this would preclude you from doing a small business in your home. It would keep... It would... For marijuana establishments, to be clear, and it would keep those types of businesses in the commercial and general business districts as written the way it is.
Yes, Renee.
I would like to join at least part of the planning board in recommending that this article not be passed. I do that for several reasons. One, the planning board is in charge in our town of writing zoning bylaws. The fact that this requires a two-thirds majority means that zoning bylaws are the most important bylaws that we pass in our town. means that zoning bylaws are the most important bylaws that we pass in our town. The general bylaws only take a majority. Um, I know that Ken, in particular, made an incredible, um, amount of investment of time to bring the first marijuana bylaws to this town. I think everyone agrees that they're not perfect and they need some tweaking. And of course, Article six did that as a good start. My concern is that, um, many of the noes that are now in the proposed bylaw change are in the rural district as well as in parts of the, um, Village Center. And of course, we all know that our rural district is our largest district. It has the biggest lots and it has the most space. Um, and we have kind of just taken care of, uh, number two, marijuana cultivation outdoors by Article number six. But I'm just concerned that this does not have the support of the Planning Board. And I just caution, um, on so many noes and what the effect of those are going to be on businesses. Before these were changed, it knows that they're PVs, which means they have to come before the Planning Board. They have to receive a special permit. Anybody who has followed this knows the time and energy the Planning Board has put into hearing hours and hours and hours of testimony to their credit. So I think we should be patient a little bit longer, um, and get this right and get additional public input and get the Planning Board's support before anything is voted on. Thank you.
Can you have some more clarification?
Yeah, uh, I was advised by Town Council based on the fact that we did not vote to recommend or abstain or reject this item. And because we are still working with the Citizens Group, the Planning Board's official stance would be we recommend the voters do not vote this article tonight.
Yes, sir.
Harold Dennis Sears, uh, 928 Borden Street. Uh, basically, uh, I feel that, you know, until the Planning Board has actually ruled one way or the other, we shouldn't make any change in this area. I think we've, uh, in Sheffield, been fortunate to fairly consistently have an excellent Planning Board. And I, I think I would rather see us wait until we actually get a ruling from the Planning Board. Thank you.
Yes?
Elizabeth Garcia, 505 South Main Street. I'm one of the citizens who's been working with the Planning Board on this particular article. The Citizens Group feels that this is a way of protecting Sheffield, particularly our rural districts where we have no protection for residents. And some of these proposals of businesses have been very close in neighborhoods. And that's one of the reasons we have been working on this table of use. Uh, the other, uh, thing I want to bring to your attention is that our village center zoning contains our historic areas in Sheffield. And the proposal that we have here will protect those areas. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Sari Hoy. Yeah, just to clarify, um, we do have protection. As Renee said, right now, in the village center and the rural areas, the Planning Board, the, 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 we would have to come to the Planning Board for a special permit. And we have heard a lot from the Citizens Group and our community over the last couple of years. And we know very well where the community stands at this time. So I think that we're much better informed now than we were two years ago. So, uh, to make the decisions in, with the community in mind. Um, and secondly, when I mentioned that we were developing, we were working on developing an overlay district, we are specifically talking about an overlay district in the center of, um, village, in the real center of Village Center, between Berkshire School Road and Miller Avenue, which is where a lot of the historical business homes are. And, uh, and that's why I would urge justice to table it and let us continue on those details. Thank you.
Yes?
I believe that these were written correctly. We saw them work properly in the Polycoff area. I believe the Planning Board did a good job in making it restrictive enough, yet flexible enough. I don't believe this amendment is necessary. I think we should stay with the rules the way they were prescribed by the Planning Board. They worked. I know people became fearful because it was a process, but it worked. And I believe we should leave them the way they were written. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We need a two-thirds vote, so... All in favor?
Can you explain again what you're voting on right now?
We are voting on Article seven, as written in the warrant.
Without any...
Correct. Any other questions before we go? All in favor?
We need a motion to table it, Mr. Moderator, or are we just voting yes or no right now?
We're just voting on the article.
Okay.
Okay. Let's try it again. All in favor? Okay, I need the voters because this is not clear. Counters all set? Okay. Okay. All opposed? Counters? I just want to make sure, as this is an important topic. Counters all set? No? Okay. You can put your hands down. Okay. For the yes, seventy-two. For the no, ninety-seven. Motion defeated. Article number eight. Also a citizen's petition. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws as follows or take any action relative thereto by inserting the italic-sized language as written in the warrant. Do I have a Planning Board recommendation here?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, uh, the public hearing on this article amendment was held on December 19th, 2021. The Planning Board has worked closely with the Citizens Group on this proposed bylaw change. Uh, the original version as presented needed to be clarified, and those changes have been made. You will hear amendments shortly. Uh, the Planning Board recommends the voters pass this bylaw as amended tonight.
Catherine Miller, 801 Clayton Road. I move to see if the town will vote to amend section 7.5.5.2, paragraph one, as follows. To insert award recognizable between eliminate and oders, to strike indoor and outdoor cultivation between from and end inserting abutting properties, and to delete in all aspects following best available technology and adding at the time of application. Second paragraph. An odor control plan dealing... Excuse me. Detailing the specific odor emitting activities or processes to be conducted on site. The source of those odors, the locations from which they are emitted from the facility, the frequency and duration of such odor emitting activities, and the administration of odor control, including maintenance and such controls. The odor control plan for marijuana cultivator, outdoor applicant, will include plans to minimize, if not eliminate... This is in the current bylaw. You're now going to insert recognizable in front of oders and following from abutting properties, and to use best available technology at the time of an application.
Have a second. Any discussion? Yes?
I'm going to also state my opposition to, um, this proposed bylaw. I know an awful lot of work has gone into it, but I have some very serious concerns. One of my main concerns is I don't know how you ever get to the point where you can assure what this proposed zoning bylaw asks for. I don't know how you prove that the odors are eliminated. We had a situation at the last, uh, special town meeting in June that Ken referenced earlier, that if you were here, it was quite a show. And you may have remembered the one woman who lived near, um, the, um, Route 7A facility, who was very upset about what the odor she could smell. We waited and waited at, uh, the select board in Town Hall to see what would follow her very strong opposition to those odors. And there was nothing. So I don't know how one person who may smell an odor when no one else does or objects to it. I live near Noah Farms. I don't object to it or a farming community. The spreading, the dressing with the fields is much worse to me. But I don't know how the board ever reaches the point that it has satisfied this, um, request for no odor verification, that there's no odor. I don't know if a consultant, um, Ken, I don't... I'm second degree member. You told me once that you were having trouble finding qualified consultants. I'm sure that's changed now since the field has changed. But I am concerned as a, as a member of this town and as a select board member that this proposed bylaw invites the impossible and it also invites suits if anyone is not happy with the outcome. And it is extremely difficult to, I believe, specify equipment at one point. And then you get your special permit and then you go for your cannabis control license. And what if something changes? You have to go back to the Planning Board with new plans. So I, I have concerns. And I would just ask that you consider whether what is written is actually doable and whether it potentially invites more problems than it solves. Thank you.
Dennis Sears again, same address. Uh, basically, uh, since, basically, the, the Planning Board has passed, you know, a, a item here. And, and I'm kind of going back to the same pitch I made when I was last up here. I, I think we should go along with that one, that the Planning Board has approved and not accept the amendment. Thank you.
Just to clarify, the Planning Board is accepting the amendment. We do not accept the original citizen's petition as it was drafted, but we have worked together as a group with the amendments. And the Planning Board is 100% in agreement on the amendment as presented tonight.
Catherine Miller, I'd just like to second what Mr. Smith said. We work closely because we exchanged information, the two groups. We sat together. And so what you have before you tonight, that was originally presented as part of the warrant, and the additional amendment that was added has the full support of the Planning Board and the citizens who worked on it. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Again, I appreciate all the work that everyone has done on this. But it, again, seems to be overreaching. Zoning should be strict enough, yet flexible. This is so rigid that it would pretty much almost eliminate any applicant from ever even trying in this town. Stopping smell at the border of a property line, 100%, is nearly impossible. I run a dairy farm. My neighbors do have to tolerate me because there's no way we can stop noise or odors. 100%. I understand that this has been a process. None of us really knew exactly what we were getting into. I agree, sometimes the odor is a little bit more than I like to tolerate. There's been some light pollution. I think we need to address these things. And I'm sure the Planning Board can address them going forward now that we understand what the industry is and have a much better idea of how it progresses. So I'm not in favor of this article.
I'd like just to respond to that if I might. We first of all have to remember that the odors that we've smelled, we smell now are from outdoor groves that were grandfathered before we got into all this rule and regulation for marijuana. So we're really talking about now is going forward. The fact of the matter is that the way the bylaw presently exists as of tonight, we probably aren't going to have much more outdoor growth. So the real issue is how much odor is going to come, be emanating from indoor activity? And what kind of indoor activity are we likely to have? And I think to ask an indoor group to control whatever... And I don't know whether making candy and gummies makes an odor or not. Haven't got a clue. And if they want to be here, fine, but they don't need to sneak up the neighborhood. And I think we have to remember there's a difference between going forward today and what happened before today.
Sari Hoy, again. Yeah, I just want to reiterate. We've worked really hard on, with the Citizens Group...
with the citizens group with this article. As I think Renee said, we know that the original bylaw is not perfect, and in places was already overreaching. And so there is still more work to do on this bylaw going forward, and to make it more enforceable and realistic. But the whole point of what the planning board and that was working with the citizens group on is really just to make it clearer and-- to actually-- to make the language clearer, but also to make it easier for us to enforce, if necessary. If it really came down to an issue of order. It already says in the original bylaw, no odor from marijuana or its processing can be detected by a person with an unimpaired and otherwise normal sense of smell. So it does kind of give us some parameters. And it's really just there for extra protection if it ever comes up again. So I do support this amendment. Thank you.
Yes, Renee?
I want to thank both Catherine and Sarah for reminding me of the current existing marijuana bylaws. There is a provision in there, it was very carefully written, that calls for the applicant to submit an odor plan. There is a provision in the current bylaws on marijuana that requires the applicant to hire a consultant at their expense if the planning board requests it. There already are, in my mind, sufficient safeguards to if the planning board listens to the people and people are concerned about odor. I believe there are sufficient safeguards right now in the current bylaws. As Catherine said, this does not affect anyone who's already in business in either the indoor or the outdoor grow. Those folks got into the game when this town refused to pass the marijuana moratorium that was presented to it. So we made our bet on those companies. Since then, there have been at least one company that has been given a special permit, Sundrops. I don't know what the odor issue is over there. I haven't heard anybody talk about it. But I think if the citizens and the planning board wish to shut down the-- any marijuana industry going forward, I think there's a better way to do it. And again, I think this-- I have to agree with my colleague, and we have not discussed this before this meeting. I think this is really overkill, and it's going to cost anyone who wants to even have the ability to do a production of candy or brownies or something, an awful lot of money. And if that's the way we want to be, let's just shut the whole thing down going forward. But I really do think this article is not needed.
Yes, sir.
My name is Robin Cohen, fifteen ninety-two County Road. And also a part of the group that is at RR Ventures, the former site of the Sundise Diner. And, you know, we-- as has been said, we were the first concerned to go through the process with the bylaw. And we did present a very detailed odor control plan that was presented to the town of the meeting, and there was lots of discussion back and forth on it. And we're going forward with those plans. There's no such thing as a smell meter. It's a very subjective thing. So I think if someone came up to our-- the edge of our property and said that they smelled something, well, there's another grow, another three hundred feet down. Is it from my property, or is it from theirs? Or is it from the weeds in their pot? I don't know. But I think this is a unnecessary bylaw. Bylaw changes.
Any other discussion?
Hi, I'm Maria Nation at three thirty-four West Stoll Road in Ashley Falls. And my partner grows cannabis hemp legally with the license of the Mass Registration. And I love living in Sheffield. I love living in a right to farm place, even though the spreading of manure can sometimes relieve water in your eyes. Get it? It's okay. I chose to live there, and I love it. I do know that it is a little disingenuous, I'm afraid, in my opinion, to equate the smell of cannabis with the smell of candy or brownie cooking. The smell is really intense. And I say this as a person whose partner is making his business out of this. It doesn't seem fair to have a neighbor have to put up with that in our little town. It is intense. It is not the smell of brownies or cooking. It is a very strong smell. And remember when the bylaw first changed in Massachusetts that allowed us all to grow six plants each? And my UPS guy could come down the road, and he said, like, "I can tell where it's growing because it's there, it's there, it's there, it's from the road." You can smell it when it's in bloom. Way far away from just the neighbors. And I think that we need to be considerate of our neighbors in our process, in our-- you know, I don't want to limit anybody's ability to make money. My partner's making this. Well, we're very considerate of that. And the idea of growing these massive fields of it is not fair to the neighbors and the community. So I would vote in favor of passing the smell ordinance. It is not the smell of brownies or cookies or something. That's disingenuous. So thank you.
Yes.
Maria, thank you for your comments. I was not meaning to be disingenuous. What I was trying to say is, given the limit that just passed on outdoor growth, it is likely that there will be no more outgrowth. We are one over the number that was just passed. What I was trying to say is that there is, in the current marijuana ordinance in our town, the requirement, as this gentleman just said, for an odor control plan and the select board-- excuse me, the planning board has the ability to hire an odor consultant to help them go through and understand what equipment is required to make it so that there are not smells emanating from the building. I'm not suggesting that somebody make marijuana brownies in a non-enclosed, non-regulated, non-odor-contained building. My point was that those are needed. But this bylaw, I think, just makes it impossible for anyone to not only conform to the current bylaws on their odor control, but this just puts a layer on it that I think is going to shut down business. And if you want to shut down anyone from coming to this town, I would say do it honestly, not disingenuously, if I may use your word, by making it so that you could probably not get through these controls. That's all I was trying to say. We have enough. I don't see that we've had any problem with odors outside of those that are with the indoor grows and the outside grow, grows that were grandfathered, and they will continue to be odor-averse.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Janet Cookson. I've been a resident of Ranipole Road for twenty-six years. We love our agricultural neighbors, our dairy farms, our manure smells. I totally agree with Maria just said. There is a huge difference. And I think it is something that is gradually changing this beautiful area that we live in. Agricultural farming is priority. Growing marijuana is different. And I agree a hundred percent what she just said. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Could we call the question?
Second.
Okay. So I think we are now going to vote on the amendment. Oh, call in question. That's why we have legal counsel here. So we have a vote, that's a majority vote. Vote on call in question. Two-thirds, two-thirds. Oh. So I hope everybody raises their hand, or we'll have to count. I think, my judgment, we have a two-thirds or majority vote. Or two-thirds. Okay, so the question is called now. We're voting on the amendment now. Well, okay, so that's a majority vote. So all in favor of the amendment as written? Opposed? Okay, amendment passed. Okay, now we have to vote, and this is two-thirds, on the article with the amendment. All in favor? Okay, I am going to mine. No, this is too sensitive. We're going to have to count. See, that's why I said hold the applause to the head. At our annual town meeting, we're going to have the clickers. Is that correct? I think I'll vote it. Counter's done? Okay. And we'll just let them tally what they have, and then we'll do the opposing. Okay, let's do the opposed. Okay, please. Yes, one twenty-nine. No, forty-seven. Motion passes. Okay, so that is everything. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for the-- I have to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second. Thank you. Now you're going to vote.